Perfect. Okay, so a few slides to sort of embellish what I'm going to talk about today. But the topic, as John has so nicely introduced already, is all around what we call net zero pathways. And I'll go into the detail of what we mean by that. But this is a net zero pathways for communities. That's the area that I'm particularly interested in and what we're going to focus on today. And what do I mean by that? Well, it's interesting that the feedback from John's question was partly, I think, related to the councils and the operation specifically of the councils that you're responsible for and how that relates to emissions and energy use and that kind of stuff. But also broadening out into the influence that you as councils have over the communities that you represent. And I guess it's the latter of those two that is the focus of the work that we're doing and what I'm going to talk to you about today. Because what I guess in a nutshell, what we seek to do is to support communities to understand, to plan, to execute and to measure progress against your own kind of place specific pathway to net zero. So I'll get into the details of what I mean by that, but hopefully that just sets the scene for you a little bit. A little bit about me, sorry, John asked me to use a photo that was not worky. So I found a photo of me out and about at a county show actually last summer. So there you go. So a bit about me in Opah G. So yeah, my background is environmental sciences, studied at the University of East Anglia, which is pretty well known for its work around climate change and climate data and sort of being at the forefront really of discovering and then starting to communicate the data, if you like, around climate change and rising global temperatures and the impact of that. So I was very fortunate to start my career there. I've actually spent 16 years also working at the university itself. And often, if you like, at that interface between the academics who are crunching all the numbers and understanding the problems and then how that communicates out to the world outside of academia, which has been a very interesting place to work. But in doing that, I've worked a lot in the area of sustainability and climate change and particularly, I suppose, the people and community side of it. I've measured lots of carbon footprints in my time. I'd like to say everything from banjos to beer bottles, buildings and even whole communities. And I guess what I particularly enjoyed doing in this line of work is working with people and communities to look to devise and implement strategies for reducing emissions, but strategies that actually connect with people and are meaningful to people at a local level. Yeah, and for the last 18 months, I've been Associate Director for Net Zero here at Opah G. And through that work, I've been fortunate to work with communities, local authorities, businesses, government, really around this area of work and broadly helping to hopefully enable a fair transition to a cleaner, greener future. So I guess a lot of us are going to know all of this stuff, but it's important just to focus back in on, I guess, what the facts are and why we are talking about and trying to focus on reducing emissions and aiming for this target of net zero. So what are the facts behind it? Well, global temperatures are rising and being driven by increases in atmospheric greenhouse gases, extreme weather events becoming more frequent and intense. We see them on our screens far more regularly than we used to. Sea levels are rising, threatening coastal communities. And certainly that's something that those of us who live on or near to the coast are seeing with our own eyes. And then the obviously associated issues around loss of biodiversity, changing crop yields, and then also into the sort of physical and mental health impacts of some of this stuff, particularly amongst the most vulnerable issues of displacement, migration. These are all the kind of acute examples of how the global climate crisis affects nearly every aspect of human life and the natural world now. And I'll move on from the doomsday stuff very quickly, but I think we've all seen the images that are out there, whether it's flooding in Pakistan, I've got the wildfires in Australia image here, but you know, we've all seen what happened in Los Angeles recently as well. And every time these things happen, it will kick off the debate over exactly what the influence of climate change and human induced climate change is on these things. But as the climate stripes in the background here show, that there is abundant evidence that the global climate is changing and that human induced increases in emissions are a very, very big part of that. And as I said, it happens at a local level as well. So I live in Norfolk like John, and we see this stuff happening right on our doorsteps, whether it's the changing landscape on the coast, flooding, even wildfires that we were seeing just a couple of years ago when we got those very warm summers. So you know, this is the stuff that we hear all the time. This is the stuff that we see on the news all the time. And we know that it's an urgent challenge and at a global level, although there are certainly some world leaders out there at the moment who are challenging things like the UN Paris Agreement. What it does is it outlines a global pathway to net zero by aiming to limit warming to ideally well below two degrees. But and encouraging countries to aim for net zero emissions by the second half of the century. And we in the UK, we've responded to that by enshrining a national pathway to net zero by 2050 inter law. And that's with a trajectory that's consistent with the Paris Climate Agreement. And I guess there's a question of, you know, we talk about net zero a lot, but what, why are these sort of pathways towards net zero helpful in terms of the data and the numbers that sit behind them? And they're very, very big numbers when we look at a global level. Annual emissions of what we call carbon dioxide equivalent. So this sort of basket of greenhouse gases of which carbon dioxide is one, but there are others as well, but we tend to talk mostly about carbon dioxide. We emit 40 million, so 40 billion tonnes of this stuff every year globally. It's an enormous number. It's far too big for, you know, really for most of us to get our heads around or to think, how on earth can we influence that at a local level in any way? So that's the annual emissions and we know that there is a total budget in terms of if we keep emitting at this level year on year, then eventually we're going to cross that line, we're going to go over this budget. And it's once we do that, that we start to creep towards warming levels of two degrees or even further and the consequences that come with that that we've already spoken about. So when we talk about a pathway to net zero, it's thinking, well, how much can we reduce that 40 million, 40 million kilotonnes, 40 billion tonnes each year in order that we get to a point where we don't cross the carbon budget, we don't exceed the carbon budget in a way that's going to lead to these damaging impacts? So that's it at a global level at the top there of that table. And then we've obviously taken the UK slice of that, which is about 1% of global emissions. And we've set inter law our own pathway on how can we reduce our annual emissions to a point where we don't exceed the budget that we know would mean that we as a nation were contributing to to climate change that starts to go beyond those limits that we're really keen to try and stay within as set out by the Paris Agreement. But again, how does that apply at a local community level? I think these numbers are so big, these challenges are so big and the solutions to them seem sort of beyond our influence in many ways, whether it's large offshore wind farms, whether it's solar farms causing lots of interesting debates within communities at the moment. All of this kind of really big stuff that we hear when we talk to communities about it, that it, two things, I suppose. One, when I go out and I spend a lot of time going around community libraries, talking to anyone who wanted to come and speak about this stuff, definitely a concern about these numbers and about the changing climate and about how that is influencing people's lives and concerns about the future and what that might mean. That concern was absolutely there, but then when you get to the question of, well, what can we do about it at a local level? There was a lot of shoulder shrugging that I saw in the conversations I was having, a lot of, a lot of intent and sort of keenness to do something, but very little feeling of what that can actually look like in a meaningful way at a local level. So getting on to what we look to do with our community focused net zero pathways, we we're looking to answer this question of how should individual communities, how can they sort of understand, set and meet their own net zero goals, prioritise emissions reduction projects, and then also source funding to deliver them and engage their communities in that journey? And one of the ways that we do that is to take these massive numbers at a global level or even at a UK level and say, well, what's your community's slice of that challenge? How does that look like at a village level or a town level? And so the example we've got here is Heather Set in Norfolk, who we've been delighted to work with for probably about 18 months or so now to develop a pathway to net zero for that community. And the starting point for that really is, well, how much is, what emissions is your community responsible for on an annual basis? And what's your budget? What's the budget for you that we're looking to stay within? And I should say that these numbers are aligned with probably the annual emissions number, we use about 40 different data sets to pull together the numbers that sit behind that, and they are community and locally specific data around buildings and transport and land use and all of a carbon footprint for a place. And then the budgets are taken proportionally down from the UK carbon budgets. And then we've got some friends that I work with and colleagues, former colleagues from the University of East Anglia and the Tyndale Centre that they're associated with, who have helped us to break that budget down into a more local level. And it's really about setting that baseline. So and again, thinking about net zero pathways at a community level, what we find when we talked to communities is that the enormity, the complexity of the global climate change challenge is deeply concerning to communities, often for varying reasons, but it also creates feelings of disempowerment, of hopelessness, disengagement and often confusion, like I say, about what difference can we actually make at a local level? So what we seek to do is to empower communities by demystifying and then contextualising this global climate change challenge and at a local level and then providing an achievable people and place centric roadmap to a more sustainable future that we then hope can help to inform local decision making in a way that the pathway to net zero can be sort of meaningfully included in future decisions, whether it's about housing, whether it's about transport, whether it's about people or schools or health or whatever it might be, that hopefully we can arm local communities with the knowledge and the context, the local context around climate change and pathways to net zero that enables it to be considered alongside all of the other challenges that communities face and the reasons for making decisions in the best interest of local people. So there's kind of five bits to what we do with a community net zero pathway. The first bit is, as I've mentioned already, this sort of, what's the carbon baseline? What's the starting point? What emissions is this particular place responsible for? What's its slice of the UK carbon footprint? And also what's its slice of the journey towards net zero? And as I said, there are two bits to that. So one is understanding a community carbon footprint. So annually, what are the emissions associated with all of the activities that go on within a particular community? And that's those associated with buildings, with transport, with land use, agriculture. And we do that at a village or town or a city. And it sets that baseline against which future projects to reduce emissions can be planned and tracked. And then there's also this community carbon budget element, and that illustrates the maximum total amount of greenhouse gas emissions that can be released into the atmosphere associated with activities within a community within a specific timeframe in order for that community to be able to say that we've met our share of the UK's pathway to net zero. And it's those two things that we find actually create quite a bit of confusion because ultimately the pathway to net zero is the journey, it's the strategy for a particular place, whether it's a village, whether it's a country, whether it's us globally, that pathway to net zero is simply mapping out the route to which we're trying to stay within the budgets that we've been set right up to this Paris Climate Agreement. So set the baseline, know where you're starting from. And actually, so for me, this is the A, the most important bit, B, the most enjoyable bit, but it's absolutely critical to ensure local engagement around this stuff. Lots of people could sit behind a computer, calculate a baseline, produce some graphs and say, oh, here's your pathway to net zero, off you go. But actually, it's very, very unlikely to get anywhere if the community haven't been engaged meaningfully in the process of determining what that pathway to net zero should and could look like. So as part of our local engagement, we'll explore, for instance, which decarbonisation interventions are most popular and which are those that actually align with local priorities, as I mentioned, whether it's around health, whether it's issues related to housing and transport, whether it's where the financial pressures sit at the moment. Because actually, a lot of the interventions that can support a transition to net zero can also have these knock on and added benefits in all sorts of other areas. And what we really find when we talk to a community and I heard comments earlier about it's difficult to engage people. And I think it is almost inevitably difficult to engage people if the only message is one around we need to achieve net zero. As much as people are engaged and as much as people care about this challenge, ultimately there also needs to be the short term benefits, the medium term benefits and the longer term benefits that are associated with this. So by aligning activities and measures that can support a transition to net zero with other things that people can potentially hopefully feel benefit from in the short term is by far the easiest way, well, the most successful way to engender engagement. Now, it's not, easy was the wrong word because it's not easy, because a lot of these, you know, there's not always a lot of money around for these things. We have to fight hard to find the funding to enable some of this stuff to happen, for instance. But actually, when we can combine all of these co-benefits of different measures together, that's when you often see increased engagement and then change off the back of it. So yeah, through our local engagement, we explore how the community can most meaningfully contribute to and influence the reduction of greenhouse gases. And as again, we had mentioned earlier, there are some things that parish and town councils can have control over, other things that you can influence. And what we look to do is to balance all of that to understand what is the most effective intervention and influence that can be had to support this pathway to net zero. And what we also do is help for those who want to, to set a realistic net zero target date. So we've had very enthusiastic communities come to us in the past to say, we're going for net zero 2030, how do we get there? And our view is that's the wrong way round to do it. Sometimes we need to set ourselves stretch targets to achieve stuff, but actually what we can do is say, okay, 2030 is your ambition, but here's what it actually looks like in terms of the change that would need to be made within a community to achieve that. So it can be a starting point for a conversation, but what we look to do, and I'll come on to it shortly, is to sort of handhold through that process of coming up with what is actually a more realistic and achievable target date for a community to achieve net zero. And we do that through our net zero pathway model that we've built. And we work together with communities, taking on board the feedback from local engagement to build a bespoke pathway to net zero for a particular community. The starting point is the baseline and then we look year on year at different interventions that can be taken in order to chip away at that, at those community level emissions on a pathway to net zero. The, I guess there's two ways that one can achieve net zero. One is by reducing emissions, the other is by taking carbon out of the atmosphere. Now, the former is far easier to measure and the numbers are much clearer than the latter. But when we talk about taking carbon out of the atmosphere, what we often refer to are nature based solutions, tree planting, hedgerow restoration, peatland restoration, a lot of the sort of the green stuff, if you like, that. And what we look to encourage through our pathways is not only to look at the measures that reduce emissions, but also local activities that can be undertaken that actually can have an influence over carbon sequestration through nature based solutions that also of course bring benefits for biodiversity, for ecology, for health and wellbeing, for creating green spaces in local areas. And the exercise that we go through in building a pathway is that we have around 70 plus different decarbonisation options from those that reduce emissions through to those that these nature based solutions. So everything from hedgerow restoration up to installation of solar panels is in there. And we work with communities to kind of move the pieces around the chessboard, if you like, and think, okay, well, so what are the things that we could potentially really influence and do in the short term, this year, next year, over the next five years? What are the sort of measures that actually are going to take a bit longer than that? Maybe as a community, you're not in the place to implement or influence them right now, but perhaps there are measures that can happen over the next five years to sort of set the scene for other things to happen further down the line, whether it's around. And one of the big, the big things that will always come up in these pathways is around electrification. We, the, there's stuff that's going on in the background, if you like. Our electricity is coming, is becoming greener every year, thanks to large developments of wind turbines, solar panels, other renewable energy technologies. And but the way that at a community level, one benefits from that greening of our electricity grid is to have some of the stuff that currently we power with fossil fuels to be powered by electricity instead. So whether that's heating in homes, whether that's the vehicles that we drive, as those things become more electrified, then they will gain the benefits of our electricity grid becoming greener. Now, I totally understand there are a number of sort of offshoots of that particular, those particular comments that also have real significant influences and impacts on communities, whether it's onshore renewable energy developments, et cetera, that are all part of this wider debate. But just to set the scene in terms of some of the stuff that can happen at a local level, for instance, through more electrification of heating systems in homes, that then gets a local benefit in terms of reduced carbon footprint, but also hopefully more affordable heating from the fact that we are doing these big things at a national level to decarbonise. So what our pathways will do, will prioritise measures based on feedback from local community engagement, building off the baseline that we started with. And will enable us to prioritise measures over the whole pathway to net zero based on cost and cost per tonne of carbon saved, if you like, but also community priorities. And just to sort of pick up on that, the point around pathways to net zero, there are obviously different routes that we could take, even at a community level to get to net zero, let's say by 2050. We could do things really early or maybe think, you know, a bit like getting, trying to get my kids to get their homework done, leave it right till the last minute. But the difference in the pathway is actually profound in terms of how that impacts on whether one stays within a carbon budget or not, because we've got two examples here, one around early action, one around late action. But when we look in the case of the village of Heather Set on how the difference between those two things in how close we get to staying within our carbon budget, which I spoke about earlier, it's really quite significant. So in both instances, in theory, you're achieving net zero by the same day, but the impact on the climate over acting late is almost double or just over double that of acting early. So I think that's an important point around context here. And then what we look to do towards the end of the process is put in place an action plan. So we've broken down a pathway to net zero into achievable, actionable, measurable interventions over time with targets for numbers of, for instance, renewable energy technologies to install in homes, whether it's solar panels or air source heat pumps, potentially numbers of trees to plant or hedgerows to restore, metres of hedgerows restored or these sorts of targets, or numbers of EV chargers to install perhaps in a local context that might help to enable communities to feel a bit more comfortable with transitioning from a petrol or diesel vehicle to an electric vehicle. So all of these can be as part of achieving a net zero target. And the key to this action plan, I think, is the role that communities can play in achieving it. We know that you as parish and town councils aren't going to go out and install solar panels and aren't going to go out and install air source heat pumps or electric vehicle chargers, you know, it's up to individuals whether they transition to an electric vehicle. But there are certainly things that can be done. There is funding that's out there to enable these things. There are economies of scale by doing stuff collectively rather than individually. There are, for some, there are opportunities around community energy schemes where communities actually buy into the production of energy and therefore get some of the financial benefits that feed back into the community perhaps, rather than just going to individuals. So there are all sorts of different measures that we walk through and then can implement as part or can include as part of an action plan. And I guess like with any pathway, strategy, action plan, it's important to continually review progress, review progress. And maybe that will lead to a bit of a tweak in the baseline and say, okay, we've done well on this thing, but we've not done so well on this thing. Actually, maybe now we need to focus our attentions to this bit of our carbon footprint because also that aligns with these particular challenges that we have in our community at the moment. So there's that whole question of continually reviewing progress and updating against it. So yeah, the images to the left here are from some of the final reports that we've produced on behalf of communities for their own pathway to net zero that they own, that they take forward and use as far as possible to inform actions, but also build up knowledge within the community. We've endeavoured to make these, these outputs as engaging as possible. We've commissioned a local artist. these outputs as engaging as possible. We've commissioned a local artist who's really supported us with that and who is an expert in in engaging with communities and and sort of bringing together community ideas visually and pictorially as well. We thought that was really important. I should say there's a QR code in the bottom of this slide and a number of others which takes you to our website. And you're welcome to browse a number of these reports that we've produced, these next era pathway reports that we've produced for communities. So yeah, what's new and what's different about our approach? I suppose we we use localised data to show what a community can do by working together to achieve its fair share of the UK's net zero target. So so we're not just, what we see often is huge enthusiasm with communities to do lots and lots of of different things that that focus on reducing emissions or greening a community. But what we look to do is provide real context to those and propose real tangible actions and demonstrate exactly how they contribute to achieving collective emissions reduction goals whilst aligning hopefully with with other areas of community improvement. We look to produce an output that is for people and communities with real actions and the plan associated with it. And as I say, we look to present it in a in a sort of captivating and easy to consume way. And it's very much not a case of sort of consultants presenting data, or we hope not, to to other experts in the field in this stuff. We'd like to see this as as sort of people communicating with and supporting other people in a way that hopefully makes sense, is actionable and ultimately can help to inform decision making at a community level and enable a a sort of fair consideration, if you like, of future actions and decisions. A fair consideration of environmental and climate change related impacts of decisions alongside all of the other things that are incredibly important to people and that that parish and town councils take responsibility for on behalf of their their communities. Very quickly, in terms of what we've learnt so far, I could have a list of a hundred here, but I've just picked out three things. So we've learned that amongst communities we've spoken to, concern about the climate is really high, the topic is emotive. But these feelings of disempowerment are strong with this kind of overriding sense that climate change solutions are being done to communities rather than communities taking ownership for themselves. And I saw a recent study that that put the sort of feedback on this is around fifty percent of individuals tend to feel that climate change solutions are being done to them rather than them having a an influence on them themselves, which is, which is very high. I think this idea of including nature based solutions alongside the more technology focused carbon reduction interventions as a sort of a whole systems approach to this challenge is really important. I'm happy to admit, it's inherently difficult to measure and predict the impact on on a carbon balance and on a pathway to net zero from planting a tree, restoring a hedgerow, restoring peatlands, these these sorts of activities that can help to soak up carbon from the atmosphere. But we do know broadly that they are part of the picture, that they do bring added benefits. We, you know, we know that green spaces have have benefits beyond just what they do for the environment and biodiversity and ecology, but for people and wellbeing and health. And we find that by, when we're engaging with communities, some people get very excited about having a solar panel and an electric vehicle and a battery and and how how wonderful by combining those things it is in terms of them saving money on energy and and sort of managing their own energy supply and and, you know, and that is the direction of travel that we're heading in, but it's not possible for everyone and it's not affordable for everyone. So so I think matching that alongside the fact that by planting one extra tree in your garden or by managing your own space, your your own garden in a particular way, you can support in in a small, individual way, the transition to net zero is an important message and an important way of engaging people in the in the wider challenge that we're facing. And we also, we've learnt that measuring progress against targets is challenging. But simplifying metrics and language and data is really important. And that data, of course, has to be accurate and meaningful, but also easily understandable and crucially locally relevant. If a community understands that, okay, we've got a target of planting this many trees each year or restoring this much hedgerow each year or or looking to transition certain numbers of, support the transition of certain numbers of homes to air source heat pumps or or something similar or solar panels on roofs. All of this, all of these interventions can make a difference. So so creating that local relevance, I think, is is important and and sort of what feel like achievable local targets. So in terms of what's next, that we're learning from every one of these pathways we create, we hope the communities we work with are too, but we certainly learn from every community that that we work with and we try and make this process better each time. We have developed and continued to develop software that we apply in collaboration with community wide stakeholders to set these achievable local net zero targets and hopefully inform and support local planning and decision making around this complex problem and all of the interdependencies it has. We're working alongside everyone from academic leaders to artists to software developers to ensure we incorporate the most up to date data and and develop even more engaging approaches to public engagement and how we can support communities in understanding and navigating their own pathway to net zero. Yeah, and and our ambition is very much to to scale our net zero pathways offer considerably over this year and beyond and reach out across the UK to to support communities on on this journey. So so yeah, if it's, if that's of any interest, then then we'd love you to to support us. And and we'd love you to join us and and for us to support you on that journey.